The last twenty?
River?
Yeah, I wanted us to do a joint thing. Well, I wanted us to do, I wanted us to do a joint thing.
What's up? What's up? Kind of give clerks more to do and maybe hire more of them and stuff like that.
Yeah, that could make sense. Alright, I gotta, I'm getting, I'll be right back.
Hi, Mr. Crane, miss you, Mr. Crane.
Hello?
Hey, hey, former Mayor Denzel Williams, former Mayor Andy Jones, how you two doing?
I do in Sheriff.
What's up, y'all? Fantastic, nice to see you guys.
I like the new mayor's office.
Um, you know, they drive me crazy, but not as crazy as you two did.
Yeah, I probably drove you the most, huh?
Yeah, yeah, but I think I did my fair share of driving you crazy as well there, Mr. Williams.
No, not at all, actually.
Not at all.
No, not really.
You never paid me. You gave me money once and you kept on giving it to the LSPD. Unlike this fucking prick ass motherfucker right here who gave all the money LSPD gave me fucking die.
I said, "Give me a spreadsheet, you couldn't deliver."
Fuck you and your spreadsheet.
You didn't give me a spreadsheet, you got no fucking money.
VCSO will prevail! VCSO will prevail!
Get some.
Get some!
Get some! Well, true.
He's working on it, he's working on it.
Nah, I am. It's usually pretty good.
It's just a bit tired today, you know?
Guys, hangover Sundays.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I gave the Rangers money. I'm hung over for Korean barbecue, that's what I'm hung over from last night.
Oh dear.
Nice KBBQ.
We do love some KBBQ.
Vehicle U-turning down northbound smoke G road.
Everybody, anybody ever told you you look like Oob?
Sliding through a gate and we're coming out on.
Talking about Oob from fucking Dragon Ball, Dragon Ball GT.
Yo, God is in it.
Yeah, oh fucker does be looking like Oob, bitch.
I told you.
I'm almost slamming into hers for two hours, I can do that for three hours now. Alright, calm down, Oob, calm down.
Good times, good times.
Damn, good times. Yeah, I didn't really fuck with GT that much, but I still watched a little bit of it.
Yeah. A lot of copium back then, hopefully it was good, but you know?
Oh, Dragon Ball Super now, nobody liked GT, people liked Super though, Super was pretty dope.
Yeah, Super was dope.
Oh yeah, it is, especially that fucking Last Art. God damn, Jiren was a bad motherfucker. That motherfucker was bad.
What the fuck, wait, are you a paralegal now, Louis?
No, I just hang around the bathroom a little.
Why you getting closer to me, bruh?
He's gonna jump a young defense, I'm headed around.
The fuck?
I have VCB, I don't know where he went.
The fuck, Kaden?
You guys like my Sand King?
He might pop bang, John.
Yo Crane, you should show me that, dawg.
You got a Sand King? Yeah, look at the projector, that's a river G, I just confiscated it as a result of a trial.
Chat, you guys remember when Regina cheated and becomes Super Sand 4 chat?
Criminals shaking in their boots, we're coming for them assets! We are coming for them assets!
I gotta go stand by my other state officials, excuse me.
Man, I love the fact that she got fucked to this case, she so much joy.
As they fuck around, they find out.
Ah, damn, dog, little TJ got called lacking in Southampton, bruh. Southampton the ends, bruh, let me see what Southampton look like.
Is there a third that someone escorted out, unless you two here?
Uh, we got, we got all three here.
I can't get out of this bitch.
Just train it up to offense. Why? So someone doesn't steal it?
Alright, 2:15, the Brian. I'm, uh, I'm coming in right now. Okay, but I was just letting you know, these two are done getting medically treated, uh, they're ready to roll out.
But it's some big ass houses, the fuck?
What's up Sexy Turn?
Oh, I hate you so much. Why, why didn't you just sue her for it? Get it back?
Yeah.
Probably the.
Love the truck, Alan.
Chat, the YouTube been popping off, bruh?
You guys didn't respond quick enough, that was shit, it's gone.
Regina, what the fuck are you doing? I haven't seen you in forever.
What's this, hold on?
That, when you first start off in your career, you wanna, it's not that you wanna, but is that you probably will chase that content, right? You're gonna chase the hype stuff.
Yeah, literally, yeah.
This is what happens, people start off as a fan of RP, right? Yeah. And, and then they, they're like, "Oh my god, this is amazing, I love this." Then they, you know, af- after they make a name, like, after they mildly make a name for themselves in the server, they'll be like, "Oh shit, okay, um, you know what, let me, uh, you know, let me kick my stream off." They'll get like 20 viewers, 30 viewers. Stream for about two to three months, you'll start getting 100 viewers. Uh, they'll, they'll get a Twitch, or Facebook, or whatever, they'll get, they'll get, they'll start getting subs, they'll start getting money.
Hell no, that is fucking awful.
And then it turns into the content.
Yeah, you mean to move over?
Hell no, I don't have kids and I don't ever want them.
What's that? We're having kids, friend.
I have like two or three suspects ready to go, just waiting on lockdown.
You think there's a kid of mine running around, listen, I don't cheat on Angel, but I do be fucking. How much, how much, how much you fucking selling that thing for nowadays?
Fuck this! Fuck this, I'm not going back to jail! Fuck this, fuck you, friend!
Your services.
You all being, shut the fuck up, Andy!
Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, yeah, we'll call up therapy.
Oh, well.
No, 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 therapy, therapy, I'm gonna send you one.
Not right now, Denzel, we, we are all here, please, don't, do not kill him.
What? Why would Denzel ever do something like that?
We got a little bleach upstairs, uh, Andrew's parked up here, so you, you're all good to go.
Alright, hello, y'all.
Oh, I gotta go. Welcome to another town hall, there's a couple announcements I wanna get through, uh, from the DOJ side to start off with.
Bye.
Uh, so largest, uh, overall announcement is as follows. Uh, the, uh, DOJ, spearheaded by Chief Justice Thomas, as well as, uh, the Senate and the members from PD have been reviewing wholesale the penal code and the statutory punishments, uh, for the crimes therein. There is an ongoing effort to overhaul, uh, the proportionality of those fines with the current status of, uh, the economy. As such, it is likely.
Uh, they're talking about a new fine system.
Majority of entries in the penal code, uh, will be increasing somewhere roughly between, uh, 1.5 to 2. Now, uh, that is, uh, something that is ongoing and being worked on and being fine tuned as we speak, uh, that will be, uh.
Everything should be two times bigger, multiply everything by two!
So that's just what we're going through now. Now, in terms of actual, uh, law changes that are being pushed. First, uh, there is the addition of a thermite law. This law is as follows. Misdemeanor possession of thermite charges. Person possesses up to four thermite charges, misdemeanor 14 months, $1,500 fine. Felony possession of thermite charges, person possesses greater than four thermite charges, felony, 22 months, $2,025 fine.
That's it?
Previously, there was no charge for thermite in the MDW, uh, there could be some.
Nah, bruh, we not crippling them, that may, that be 5,000!
That could lead.
Thermite go for 8K, man, that be 5,000!
Explosives or criminal use of explosives, but, uh, the DOJ feels that the, uh, deterrent effect prescribed by those very severe charges for explosives represents things like C4, blown up gas tankers, you know, terroristic shit. Uh, thermite, uh, we see as an individual category unto itself. Uh, now, the second charge that is being, uh, reviewed is a gang-related shooting. Previously, gang-related shooting required the two versus two, uh, idea to satisfy the charge. That is being removed, uh, the new definition will be as follows. Any gang-related individual who engages in a shooting slash shootout with members, uh, S being bracketed of another gang. An individual is gang-related for the purposes of this charge when they actively participate in or willfully further the purposes of a criminal street gang. This can be established by either, one, a pattern of association and participation in felonious activity.
Did you see Gav left on his face? Did he really?
Statements and admissions of association and/or participation made by the individual. What does this mean? Number one, if you commit crimes consistently of a felonious nature with the same group of people repeatedly, and those people can be established to be part of a criminal street gang, then that is a gang-related incident for the individual. Second, if an individual comes in and does not have a pattern of previous history but freely admits that they are in a gang and repping.
That would be 13K per thermite, the charge should be 13K.
That will satisfy. Now, the question of what is a criminal street gang? Criminal street gang is defined as ongoing group, club, or organization which has the primary purpose of the commission of criminal offenses or the members of which, over the last 60 days, which is the current statute limitation, have engaged in a continuing or ongoing series of felony offenses. So, changes to this will make it so that it's much more, uh, easily able to be applied when it should be, such as situations where, let's say, four gang members, uh, jump another gang member of a rival faction, that is a gang-related shooting. Now, on top of that, it will allow, uh, for more investigation requirements by the PD to establish these charges, uh, instead of being a knee-jerk approval. So I hope everyone can understand that. Now, in terms of, uh, the increased times and fines or those two charges, I've read them out, the DOJ changes. Uh, does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? Alright, hearing none, uh, I just also wanna make an update that was announced this morning, I believe, at the, uh, PD meeting. Uh, the substance known as, uh.
Uh, 177 to buy and then with the 5K fines, that's 12.
Now have a charge in the MDW for it, uh, you may have seen it, uh, talked about or on the streets as of now. It is essentially a bathtub heroin derivative, uh, that no one should ever go near, you will get fucked up and probably die. So, don't be an idiot.
That shit's crazy.
Thank you. Alright, um, okay, so, any, uh, questions for the DOJ? Any questions about the Hut changes? Is anyone, everyone, uh, aware of those? Do I need to go over it? Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll shift over, uh, to the mayor's office.
Uh, hi, everyone, how are you doing? I hope you're all having a good day today. Um, I just wanted to, uh, first off, thank everyone for being here today. Um, I know this takes time out of your day, and I appreciate that every single one of you is invested in where we're going as, as, as a community, as a, as a city, as a state. And I'm glad that all of you are present for this. Um, okay, so, we're very pleased to be doing another term in office so we can continue the work that we started two months ago. Uh, business proposals have been extremely active in the past few days, uh, or week or so. And we've been giving feedback to every single one, um, that we've received that we're gonna be denying. And we've been doing that for the past couple months, so that way we can get improvement or people can at least understand why their concept may not be ready for this city yet. Um, in addition, uh, to aid our citizens better, one of the documents we're gonna be working on is to list everything about how businesses work in Los Santos. So we're gonna combine, uh, this is more like a, like a, you know, how-to, which would combine some of the information from the farmer's market rules, um, you know, talk, uh, get some, uh, feedback from, uh, the construction company on what they would want to have put in here and how businesses work overall. So that way, when you talk with any of the mayor's office, if they tell you something, they can also refer you to this document. We want it to be a legacy so that in future mayor administrations, everyone knows the steps and they can easily adapt or change them as things change in the city. Um, so that's gonna be a nice project we'll have by the end of this term. Um, as promised in our, in our campaign, mental health care is a focus for our administration as we noticed that strain when Parsons was closed and a lot of the psychiatrists left. Um, what we, uh, what we've done so far is we've approved a private mental health clinic, which gonna host, which has a buy-in and host of most of the city therapists, as well as we've worked with the DOC and DOJ on the role of mental health in their respective fields. For those interested in being part of mental health in the city, um, uh, in part of the mental health care project, um, please contact me, Ursula Lichenberg. Um, as a note, I am one of four deputy mayors, you could also reach out, uh, I am the one who is focusing on mental health care, but any of the other deputy mayors you could reach out to if I am not around, but I think most of you know I'm pretty much like always here, cuz I have no life. Um, uh, finally, um, our goal in reinstating the Department of Industry and Commerce has come to fruition, as many of you may have seen on Twitter. After months of absence, uh, all businesses in Los Santos are being audited by Sam McIntyre of the DIC, and taxes are being collected. Yes? Sorry.
Excuse me, I'm just squeezing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say, can you repeat that? I'm so sorry, say, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I said, um, we've reinstated, uh, this was one of Odessa Pearson's, uh, one of our deputy mayor's, uh, specific goals was to get the Department of Industry and Commerce coming back. Um, so they've been posting up notices that they're gonna start audits and collecting taxes again. Um, I, now, I will say this, I do not have any information on how they do it, uh, beyond what they've said at town halls. I believe the LSBN app has like an article, I'm sure Weasel, uh, has some information on that based on the previous town halls. So I do not know the specifics on how they are doing the audit or collecting taxes. Um, but, uh, yeah, they'll, they're, we did at least get that reinstated. Uh, yes, Andy?
Um, if you're doing something so far as auditing every business in the state which includes hundreds? Oh, yeah, 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 if you're gonna do something like auditing every single business in the state, which is hundreds at this point, how come there's no legislation written up for it? And why would we hand over our bank accounts to an entity that seemingly isn't even part of the DOJ?
Can I interrupt you for a second? You don't have to work together with the DIC, but you can. If you are a small market stand company and, uh, all you have is the expenses from buying materials, some salaries, and first to sales that you have, go ahead, because, I mean, it's gonna be easier for you, but, uh, if you're a serious company, there is no reason for you to hand out the information to a, uh, contracted private company with auditors with ties to other companies. Uh, yes, you're not allowed to use the information they're gathering, but then again, you know, it's Los Santos after all, you never know what's happening. So it's up to you. What you need to know is they can put you in a so-called inactive status, and if you wanna be active again, you're paying 50K in fines. But, again, as long as the DOJ doesn't say you need to be audited by the DIC, you don't have to. All you need to do is pay your taxes in the first seven days of the month for the past 30 or 31 days, or whatever, how many days the month has, so.
Is this 50K going to be a sliding scale, or is it going to be the same for all businesses?
If you read the, if you read the, uh, DIC, um, whatever rules they've written up, it's 50K flat.
And where are we supposed to find these?
Uh, well, you go and ask Sam, but I can shoot you an email if you'd like.
I mean, I feel like that should be public knowledge available at the ready.
Yeah, so the legislation, the legislation is working on getting its way into the MDW. We're prioritizing a huge number of edits right now to the MDW, and things unfortunately just have to wait in line. Uh, if I'm not directly involved with what's happened thus far with DIC, I am sitting in an oversight capacity as these things are discussed and fleshed out. Um, I've heard concerns from Robert Locksley, Jim Hayes, yourself, Ms. Jones, many other individuals thus far. And trust me, I am being a voice of reason within this. Um, everything I've seen thus far suggests to me that Ms. McIntyre is simply trying to establish some kind of system that, uh, assists people to get their taxes figured out if they don't know how and to get them paid. Now, uh, for larger businesses, as Jim said, there are some questions here about how things will work, as well as, you know, sort of whether they want to participate in this system. I can't make those decisions for you, I will say that I can vouch for Ms. McIntyre and that she only has everyone's best interests at heart. So, just keep.
Fuck me, bro!
Okay, so what's the theory behind auditing every business instead of asking each business to hand over their books and paying the tax accordingly?
I can't explain to you their logic, I'm only here telling you what I've seen thus far, but I would encourage you, because I, I know Sam was at the other town hall. Uh, there was a representative at the one after that last night, um, and she is very happy to talk to anyone about it and to explain her perspective on things. And I'm sure if you, you know, give her feedback that she can work with, um, and that is constructive, that she will take it into account.
Uh, one more question?
Yes, Mr. Scheisty.
Uh, so if a business, you know, does not pay the taxes, right, um, what's gonna, are you just gonna freeze the account, or how's that gonna work?
So, the, uh, the important thing here to understand is that the DIC is not the enforcement wing. As they are a contracted third-party firm, they are not a purely governmental firm. Uh, these people will not have the ability, uh, to enforce anything that they notice. Now, one, they are specifically looking for tax evasion, they are not looking for other illicit activities. They are not police. Two, if they do find anything that they believe is a red flag indication of tax evasion, they will funnel that to the DOC and the Unified Police Department, sorry, the DOJ, not DOC. Uh, the DOJ and the Unified Police Department for consideration to see if it meets statutory requirements for tax evasion. That is their role. Their role is just to ensure that people are getting their taxes paid and to forward on red flag.
Oh my god, you're all so fucked!
Damn. That's real unfortunate.
I'm gonna enjoy this, this season's getting fucking good! This season is getting good, bitch!
Okay, any further questions, uh, on that one? Unfortunately, I wish I had more answers, this is not my specialty, I didn't really deal with DIC.
So, so what would be a red flag, like a million dollars move to another account, or like, what, what kinda, what kinda red flag we talking about? Like, how much is, would raise a red flag?
Tax paid on the income where that million dollars came from.
I'm gonna be fucking up people before Christmas time, boys!
I mean, I kinda agree with that, are there gonna be actual guidelines for what constitutes a red flag, or is it just a free for all?
They have an entire.
Oh, bro, I need a mattress, I need a mattress!
I will send them to you after this.
Oh, God, Jesus!
And, uh, Crane, you said that they're working on updating legislation in the MDW?
Yes, they're working on getting the legislation put in so it is publicly considered.
Fuck!
And, uh, is there a representative DIC here? You said that the other two towns.
Fuck!
Is there none here today?
There weren't the other ones.
I didn't listen to Tommy!
Which is why I'm answering questions, I guess not, because they would've spoken to me.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Yes, ma'am, over in the petty box.
Uh, right here.
Oh, there, sorry, Chelsea.
Yeah, uh, so, Chelsea Lafayette, Weasel News, uh, so.
No, 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 this is, this is a town hall meeting, this is publicized, so this is, Dean's watching this on TV at home.
To enforce anything, but the official documentation you were given.
Wow, plus one, bitch!
A business that does not submit itself to the audit will be considered inactive. I'd like to know, like, who has authority, how that works exactly, and what does it entail for a business to be inactive?
So that's all in the, uh, legislation's gonna be pushed out, I can't recite to you verbatim their exact conditions. Uh, I will tell you that in terms of those, uh, things, those are recommendations they would make to the DOJ. They are not an enforcement wing, I'll repeat that again. Those are things they can prescribe and things that the DOJ may in fact agree to ultimately, but, uh, we have not gotten to the point yet where we're at that stage. This is something that is being rolled out and something that is being fleshed out that was started a long time ago by Stan. And we are continuing that legacy and working to make something out of it.
Thank you very much.
Alright, are there any further questions, uh, for the mayor's office at this time?
Yeah, I got one.
Fuck Commissioner Malton!
I got one, I got one.
Is that just like in general for the mayor's office, or about the tax issue?
Yeah, I mean, it could be in general for the mayor's office at this time.
Okay.
We don't need a commissioner!
I got next, Carter.
You got next, alright.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, yo, how's the mayor's office gonna tell us what we need and don't need when we present y'all facts and figures about a budget that we actually need the money?
True!
I, I just, I'm very upset and flabbergasted that y'all have the audacity to tell us y'all don't need that much money when we present to y'all our costs in paper and y'all sit there and say, "You don't need it."
Yeah, I.
It kind of, uh, it kind of degrades, but the fact that like, we're actually taking the time to show you what we need and we still get shit on for it. I mean, if you want the city to be policed, wouldn't you want to actually look at, I mean, let me ask you this, have y'all looked at the spreadsheets provided to y'all?
I am not a financial person, so I have not spent time looking, I've glanced at a couple of them, but generally, I let the budget folks within the office do it. This is what I, this is what I will say, Dwayne, in this regards, is simply that, um, uh, I know that we are currently working and evaluating what's a better way that we can deal with the Unified Police Department and help you guys with your budget in a lot more friendly of a way, because I think, I think we're all in agreement that these meetings have been frustrating, um, frustrating, angering on every side, and I would like to see that everybody get along a lot better, um, so.
Right, so, who, who's the person?
Give us the money and it's not gonna be an issue.
Hold on, hold on, Angel, who, who's the person should I be talking to, uh, in order to get this established? And like shove this paperwork in their fucking face, excuse, and their face?
Is the deputy mayor that is in charge of our budgeting and, um, is basically in charge of making sure that the state account is, uh, set up properly?
Who is that?
Uh, Solom Yellow, he is our deputy mayor. Yeah, unfortunately, he couldn't make this specific meeting, he was hoping to, but, um, outside of the city plans, kinda got in the way.
I thought she said Salim, I was about to say, we lost the money, bruh.
He applied for DOC, denied him.
Okay, so, Solom Yellow's the one I need to talk to?
Yes, yes, he would be the one to speak with.
Chat, why haven't Dean becomes IRS?
Who had the second question? Sorry, couldn't hear.
Why haven't Dean becomes IRS?
Down here, on the floor. Yeah, sorry, I'm late, your honors.
See you behind the chair.
I had to crawl my ass here from the apartments, and you know why I had to do that?
Did your wheelchair get stolen?
No, it's because, uh, Judge Crane here was so gracious as to give me the money for a new wheelchair, but I couldn't get a new wheelchair cuz there were no doctors on duty. And if I wanna get a new wheelchair, it's $10,000, I wanna get it myself, and that shit is ridiculous, your honors. Quite frankly, I'm appalled.
Get a higher paying job!
Where the fuck are my cheap wheelchairs? And why do I gotta crawl everywhere, once every 30 days until a doctor decides to get on duty?
Well, I can't speak to Pillbox's medical staffing, they have their own department with their own staffing issues.
Oh nah, I'ma look out for the boys, as long as I get my paycheck, you know what I'm saying, chat? I'ma look out for the boys.
I'm sorry, you had to go through that.
I'ma look out for the boys, you feel me, like, hey, I'm like, hey, Romney, check this out, bruh.
Checking the Yellow Pages for a taxi.
I could audit you, but I got a lot of money being moved on this side, I don't know the fuck, I don't even know where that money is coming from.
But I would definitely contact Pillbox about that, because they're staffing.
It's not a cool 150K this way, you feel me?
Unfortunately, we have no control access.
And I'ma, and I'ma keep missing, I'ma keep not looking at that goddamn area of the account.
Far as I understand.
I have another question, uh, towards you, uh, Lichenberg. Um.
I got, I'm next.
Lichenberg, okay.
Sorry, Ursula, this is in a professional capacity, alright. Uh, what do you handle in the, uh, mayor's office, just out of curiosity?
Uh, my specific, my specific area of ex, oh, do you mean mayor's office in, in general, or just me?
Yeah, no, just like, what is your, like, what do, what do you have a hand in?
Okay, um, okay, so the mayor's office, uh, so everyone.
And this is me, this is me on a science project, this is me on a science project, where my teacher's saying, "What did, what did you do during the science project?", this is me.
We work on businesses, and we work on suggesting ideas, um, to, uh, to higher authorities, to the Senate, to DOJ, um, in terms of, uh, changes that could be done to the city.
I didn't be jumping to everybody's name, bro, like I was. What I was asking is what specifically, what part do you handle?
Okay, what I handle is, I handle media relations, public relations, I handle the mental health care initiative, business proposals, um, so I can speak to that, I, I had a big hand with vendors licenses and helping everyone with that.
So basically, you come do this because the rest of the office won't.
Yeah, so essentially, you don't handle any of the finances?
Yeah, I.
Why, bro? She's getting shot!
No, finances are not what I was brought in to help with.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I watched plenty of NASA launches, I don't know how to fucking launch a rocket. I do have a quick question for you, Ms. Ursula.
Yes.
Alright, um, I need, uh, uh, this commissioner shit is stupid, I need, all the senators can collectively suck my fat sheriff cock, they're not getting rid of me! Is there any way that, does anyone have a way to get ahold of the senators and tell them to suck my dick collectively? Do it if you care!
The judges can.
What's a commissioner?
Look at a TLDR.
And fuck those senators! The only reason why I haven't taken over town hall is because I'm nice! If the senators want war, I'll give them war!
What's a commissioner and what's a senator?
You're nice?
What is a commissioner and a senator?
Yeah, what is a commissioner and what is a senator?
I probably could've done this in a private set, after, yeah, you guys don't, alright, nevermind, continue.
You're TLDR.
Wait, what? We have senators that we don't even know about?
I thought it was the mayor's office.
Since Sheriff Fred did bring this up, um, uh, I, I, I will address this, um, the commissioner role is something that is being discussed between, um, the mayor office and the senate, um, in terms of, um, having a little bit of more oversight for the police department, especially-
Wait, isn't there like one senator per motherfucking state?
Uh, because, uh-
Am I, am I dumb, chat? It's one senator per state, right? How the fuck is we, why does she say senators? Oh, it's two.
This is how much money you'll have, divided amongst your various units, and then, um, come to request with one individual as opposed to dealing like with like fifty different individuals within the police department.
Alright.
You guys are too scared to actually work with people, so you just make someone else do it for you?
I am the senate!
Oh my.
Okay.
Wow, okay.
So then he said fuck himself?
Yeah.
But in any case, um, that is something that's currently being worked on, it has not been implemented, as you can see, it is still, uh, work in progress, um, and obviously, as you can see, Sheriff Fred is not happy with this situation. Um, but that's all I can really say about that right now, is everything is still very much in progress.
What I feel like Fred just like uncovered the Illuminati in Los Santos.
For this, um, this auditing process by the DIC, or is that completely set in stone?
Their third-party organization is, as I understand it right now, it is done. Um, Alan could speak more to it than I can, because they are, they are separate department, um, well, not even department, they are, they are basically a outside organization that is independent in this regards.
So no pixel hired the real IRS to fuck people in game?
Unfortunately, yeah, Sundays are not a great day.
And all you do is some-
The content, the content.
Uh, Department of Health bullshit and dodge questions with media relations?
I have a question for media relations.
Yes.
How does the mayor's office feel that the mayor is an ex-street racer who's actively defunding the street racing unit?
Well, I can't speak to that specifically.
Does that concern you, does that concern you at all?
I don't, I don't think I've ever seen you answer a question straight up, Ursula.
I have answered many questions straight up when I have the answers. The problem is, I do not always have the answers, the problem is, is that sometimes other members of the staff do, and if they are present, I defer to them.
Other members of the staff that did not show up for the meeting today.
Then why don't they show up?
Unfortunately, everyone's on different schedules, um, and-
Nobody gives a shit about the Department of Health, people are here, you got the police department here for, for the budget issues that they have. You got people who are interested in the DIC, there's not a representative of DIC here.
No, we don't have a representative?
There's nobody here to, there's nobody here to answer the police's questions about budgeting. Seems like you do nothing but dodge questions and talk bullshit, to be honest.
I mean, first of all, there's no law laws between my shift and the fucking BCSO, but at this point, the state account should be up so many millions that there's no reason-
Yeah, listen to the two fucking murderers in the back, Ursula, they're making some good fucking points.
The only reason you didn't get a re-up for your budget, Fred, is you didn't, you didn't present any information in my office. If you would've just came to me with a little spreadsheet, you would've gotten money, just like the Rangers did, just like the LSPD.
I don't remember it being like that at all!
It was pretty simple, it was pretty fucking easy.
I don't remember it being anything like that!
I've never been convicted of murder, so don't call me a fucking murderer.
I'll still call you a murderer, motherfucker!
Then charge me with it, you pussy.
You are both murderers!
Then charge me with it, pussy.
I wish I could, but those sixty days are done past, motherfucker!
Oh yeah, I don't have fucking sixty days, pussy, charge me.
You and your murderer girlfriend have fun, I'm sorry, wife, I'm running the back.
Come on, charge me, come on.
Oh, what's she gonna do, is Andy Jones gonna pull off my fingernails like she did Bass?
Jerry, are you gonna charge me?
Jerry, Jerry! Ah, I might make it a fucking attempt, motherfucker!
You just make, you're just sitting there making excuses and excuses and excuses, come on.
Making excuses, yeah, we could've-
The fuck just happened when I walked out?
I'm also confused, I was arguing that you should have a budget.
Fucking convict me, motherfucker! The only thing you murdered was your chances at a budget, because you can't do shit, motherfucker, can't even get me a spreadsheet, you worthless fuck.
Fuck your spreadsheet, motherfucker, worst mayor ever!
Worst mayor ever? At lea-, hey, at least this, Brad, at least I told you I was fucking you right to your face.
Oh.
Gotcha, well, guess what, I'm fucking you now, motherfucker!
He's got a, he's got a point, friend. He's got a good point, friend.
Y'all, okay, I don't remember the spreadsheet.
Wait, 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 he fucked her wife?
You in the blue suit, move your ass over to the outside, bro.
Alright, so moving past, uh, the questions directly for the mayor's office. I'm gonna open the floor up to general questions at this time, comments, concerns, we're gonna do this orderly, if people get out of hand, I'll have you arrested. Let's proceed, anybody have a question in general? None of the people in the gal, or you have a question?
No, I'm just here to watch. I'm just waiting for that dick there, um, uh, Justice Crane, because I am gonna fuck all these motherfuckers up on Christmas time, that's my goal!
Why are we here without a representative of, of the DIC here?
Unfortunately, they've made the past two meetings, but could not, I guess a representative was unable to make this meeting.
Yes, Mr. Ray. They essentially neglect people here.
Some information-
They don't care.
...leading the DIC. Well, I was here in the first, uh, uh, town hall meeting and I, uh, did my research. So, if you guys wanna ask me questions after town hall meeting, I'll be here and say the whole-
Stop, she's dead already?
Wait, I'm sorry, what, what do you do?
Jim Hayes is a licensed attorney, he also deals with financials for Amber.
Then why don't they show up?
Oh, alright. Questions about, uh, finance and accounting, he's a good person to talk to.
Can he give us a budget? Is that what you do, can you do that for us?
No, the only people that can give you a budget aren't at this town hall, just like the only people that can answer questions about DIC are not at this town hall.
Son of a, god damn it!
Can I try to ask you questions?
Alright, anybody else have any general questions, anything you wanna raise, this is the time to do it, laws you feel need to be changed, anything you wanna bring up? Yes, sir.
Uh, as of right now, the penal code is really fucking vague on what accessory is, it's like a fucking two sentences. The only way that you can fucking, uh, vamp it up so it not as vague, and then anything that like I do to like felony obstruct justice and then motherfucker like carry a cop on accident or some shit, like I get charged with it?
Uh, I can look at it, sure, um, my belief is that, for most people, uh, the idea of an accessory, uh, should be fairly common sense, but, you know, I take your point, I'll, uh, look at getting something ready.
For the people I've talked to, it seems that they get pushed with accessory just for being even like remotely tangible related, like, uh, for instance, and it's nothing to do with the court case coming up, Mr. Crane, so don't even try to stop me. Uh, fucking, a guy speeds away and the person's trapped in the car, they can't get out, they get charged with felon, like, uh, accessory to, what, anything in there. And they have no choice, they have no agency to even remove themselves from the situation, yet they get charged with being an accessory, or even to a accomplice.
Where?
Uh, I understand your concern, I will tell you that typically when considering whether someone qualifies as an accessory, um, you look for when they did have the first opportunity to surrender or remove themselves from the situation, what they did, they do, how did they do it? And quite often, that is how those charges are decided. For example, I had a case the other day-
Time to make sure you hit the follow button? If you guys got a Twitch Prime, hit the Twitch Prime button, if you got a tier one, hit the tier one button, if you're an oiler.
Later in the day, he starts hanging out with those people, and he ended up in a situation where he freely joined in on what they were doing, kidnapping people, shooting people. And when, uh, they fled, he ran into a car park with them, and the only reason why he didn't continue fleeing with them was because they only had a two-door and they left his ass there. So-
Get fucked.
Uh, you know, those kinds of arguments will here if someone claims they were not an accessory and they can present a defense that claims that they were under duress or whatever else it is, and that can be borne out in court. Uh, but I will tell you that in terms of accessory, it is, uh, fairly easy to establish, given that you are not even required to be, uh, present for what's going on, you could've helped by giving someone the gun they used to murder somebody, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, okay, I think it's my main point was just that it, uh, the actual qual-, the definition of accessory accomplice is very short and very loose, and I think the general people will be confused by it.
Okay, we can look at it.
Without further expla-, explanations.
Anything else, anybody got any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, can you make off-road street racing legal?
Uh, why would it not be?
It's not, you have to be on a public road, and if you're racing off-road, it's not illegal at the moment.
Oh, good to know. Oh, if that's the case, uh, it's something we could, uh, discuss.
Alright, thank you.
Is a dirt road not considered a road?
Uh, well, they race like off-road, across dirt roads and stuff like that, you know, it's in the mountains.
Alright, uh, yes ma'am, with the bow tie.
Yes, can we have a proper town hall where there are actual representatives that are gonna respect our time, we took time out of our business to come here and address some things and nobody can answer our questions?
Sorry, she can't answer that question.
I, I, I cannot, as, as ironic as that is, I cannot speak for other people. I myself have been at all three of these, uh, DOJ's head coverage, I, I just, you know, thank you for your understanding is all I can say.
Thank you DOJ for being here at all the meeting.
Yeah, Crane, do you have a bed that you sleep in back there?
Uh, we have a, like a lay-down chaise lounge.
Come on, Blue Man, do it, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Are there any plans regarding, um, police accountability when it gets to unnecessarily crossing red lights and hitting people without making any efforts to evade them?
My lights were on.
Lights and sirens, pussy.
You got proof, pussy? Ah, fuck you and your criminal friends, you blue-haired dipshit! I already told her, and it was against my fucking will!
I honestly, I, I, I really just don't care.
Nobody gives a shit.
Um, yeah, thank you, okay, so, uh-
Actually, hi, everyone who had questions on budgets, Salim just showed up.
Hey, Salim! Oh, alright, question?
Go for it.
If we present you spreadsheet of costs to like repair vehicles, are we gonna get that money, or are you gonna sit there and say you don't need it?
Let your superior speak to me on private, I can't discuss this in public.
Yeah, it's cause, it's cause he's too scared, that's why. I think, I think it's better, I think it's better if everyone-
Because this is the thing, no, this is the thing, I've already spoken to my superior, I've spoken to my superior, alright? I've spoken to my superior already, and she couldn't give me, she couldn't give me answers. So now I'm coming to you directly, because I'm using my hard-earned money to fix things that are supposed to be covered by the state.
Get in less trees.
How much are you owed hard again?
Tell your criminal friends to stop fucking running away from the cops.
Stop crashing, stop crashing.
Fuck you, motherfucker, we're not talking to you, we're talking to the deputy mayor, you dipshit!
Alright, I'm talking to you then, you don't need to reply.
Fuck you, motherfucker! Get some!
Yeah, anyway. Oh, we gotta do this in private, or we gonna do this right here?
No, we're gonna do it in private, these type of discussions should not be done in public, because, uh-
Well, you don't want the public to know where the money goes, that way?
Angel, to be honest.
Be honest, tell, tell, tell how it is.
I would gladly, I would gladly tell everyone where the money goes, but these type of decisions should not be taken in public, and these kind of discussions should not be done in public, because, uh, it's, it's basically giving budget to specific department, why should everyone listen to that discussion?
I don't care, hey guys, I'm requesting, I'm requesting at-cost repairs for the, I'm ac-, I'm requesting at-cost repairs for the interceptors, with a spreadsheet that I created with documentation showing every single repair done, I'm requesting damage money per week from the mayor's office.
You guys drive like shit and get into wrecks constantly, I don't wanna fucking pay for that shit.
Like I said, I'm not gonna take this any further.
Okay, no, nasty.
Commit crime, cop.
If you want to speak about this, let's, let's do it in private, not in public.
Did you know it's a term of impeachment to not be transparent with the public?
That's really fucked up, that you don't want them to know where their money is going.
I'm trying not-
Yeah, where is the money going?
I do not want my money going to people!
I ain't got no money, I wanna know where the money's going. Where's the money going, man?
Not only that, you have to add that these-
But just tell us where the money's going, brother.
Thanks Carter, good looking out.
She looks comfortable though, I mean, we'll give her that, she does look pretty comfortable, but when it comes to moving, she's gonna be heavily impaired.
Yo, I'm, I'm doing lurking in everybody's chats like-
All I know is that, I was told that you would answer questions, you haven't answered anything, so I, I guess this was-
So who, yeah, who else can answer these questions, that's a good question.
Why are we here?
Wait for Salim, okay, he's here, oh, sorry, I can't answer these questions, okay, well, what the fuck's the point then?
Uh, Angel-
Why, why, why don't we vote you guys back in?
Also-
Why don't we vote we guys back in, hi?
Huh?
Why don't we vote you guys back in, what the fuck are you gonna do?
I mean, I don't know, what do you-
You can't answer anyone's questions, the civilians, the cops, the criminals, what the fuck are you here for then?
I don't know, maybe, maybe you can tell me, you seem like you're more aware of, uh, what I'm doing than, than me, so go ahead, enlighten me.
Light you? I'll tell you the fucking truth, I want you to fund the departments that you promised you'd fund.
Which departments are these?
Just about every single branch of the PD has not received any funding, BCSO, the LSPD, the SCU, the SRU, none of them. And if they have received funding, it's been half of what's been promised.
Hey, my man, if that's true, then you're doing a great job, keep it up, man.
Fuck your funding!
Hey, you, motherfucker, I will go through your apartment and take every single fucking thing you own, okay, shut your fucking mouth.
The only reason why you can get a loan, motherfucker, is because we do our fucking jobs, you better remember that over there, we're the ones that bringing all the fucking money from you goddamn brain-dead criminals. Fuck you and your asset fees, pussy!
Y'all the same people trying to avoid paying taxes as well with the DIC doing shit, so, I mean, where's, when are we gonna get money, dog?
Uh, you-
We show proof, and you shit on us.
Do, do you want transparency, I'll give you transparency.
Alright, that's what we've been asking for.
On the second of this month, okay? The way we do it and the way we've been doing it is giving budgets on a bi-weekly basis, just to make sure that everyone's tax money goes to the right places, and we make sure that we tailor each and every single department's budget. Now, can you tell me which day is today?
Fourteenth right now.
Sunday, fourteen. Which means that tomorrow you should get your budget, why are you being so hasty, why are you rushing your budget? It's not even budget day yet.
Rushing the budget, we're paying our repairs and we're short for the amount that we need. We're not rushing anything, I have received for every single one of them, Mr. Salim.
Not gonna lie, that shit's pretty pricey, bro, I'm not gonna cap.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, and, uh, like I said-
You asked me to come up with this documentation, you asked me to tell you how much all this, we were supposed to get every single week. I gave you the documentation, you tell me that you're not even gonna give me half of that?
With all due respect, Angel, I'm not-
Therein lies the problem, we tell you exactly what we need, and then you say, no, we don't need that, even though we're providing you proof.
We're still short fifty thousand of what you promised, we, we were promised a hundred fifty thousand dollars the last two weeks, we received a hundred thousand and now we're short by, uh, thirty thousand dollars. Which shows, by the way, that my calculations were correct in how much we would need, and that I asked for appropriate amount.
I would be more than happy to discuss this in private.
Okay, there it is again, why, why, this is the public's money, these people behind me are paying for our repairs, they should know, they should know what the money is going for.
And aren't they high?
To be honest.
It's the public's money!
That's an exact figure of how much she asked for for the last two weeks.
Man, all some Illuminati shit, the man said, I would not talk about this in public.
Anyone asks me how much I requested, I will tell them, and I will not do anything behind closed doors, if it doesn't need to be done behind closed doors.
Shouldn't the state account be up millions?
The state account should be up twenty-plus million dollars.
Millions.
I gotta take a, go buy a- I'm gonna take a side job at Burger Shop.
Audit the mayor's office?
Just, just to put this into perspective.
When I was in office and I still gave them money.
When Andy was in office, it was in the negative, when I was in office, I think I ended my term with sixteen million positive, and that was towards the end of my term is when asset fees happened bi-, bi-monthly, so it should've increased tenfold.
How much money is in the account?
Yeah, we should know that.
That's our money, right?
Yeah.
I pay my taxes.
I don't know if they wanna know how much money's in that account.
Uh, you love your job at Burger Shop.
There's like two hundred million, that bitch.
I'd have to, look at that, I have to take a job at Burger Shop, keep up with this shit.
We wanna know!
Your employee, the we wanna know! We wanna know!
Everybody wants to know.
We wanna know.
Yeah, even these criminals over here are paying their taxes, how much of their money is in that account?
Exactly.
Sorry, I can't, I can't hear you, you're speaking.
That's not the agreement.
I mean, if I contributed to that part, that amount of money, I wanna know.
You wanna know?
Audit the Fed!
Audit them!
Hey, look, man, I'm neither a criminal nor am I a cop who seems to hate you right now, I'm just a civilian and I wanna fucking know where the shit is all the money?
Where the fuck is the money, man?
Flashbacks. Flashback!
No.
God, it's like the US all over again!
Jeez, look at that, they don't want you to know where your money goes, Dan.
Look at that, they answered the question. I was joking, the US, I was joking! I was joking, the US, I was joking. I was kidding.
It's an expensive looking mask Mr. Sla has on.
And if we do anything wrong, we will actually be removed from our, our office. So don't worry about that.
Well, who are the senators?
Yeah, according to whom?
Yes, that's who.
Who's auditing?
How do we know these, these, uh, deputy mayors aren't embezzling the money?
Yeah, who watches the watchers?
Okay, you're gonna, you, you're saying I'm embezzling money and I drive a ballistic compact?
No, we're not saying that. We're saying, how do we know you're not?
Stop pushing that narrative.
Yeah, where the fuck is the money?
We're just gonna assume you're not a dumbass who embezzles money and then buys a fucking Lambo and make it obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that therapist off of Ozark.
We're just asking where the fuck the money is and how much.
Yeah.
Right now, you know, you're in this place.
The money's in the state account. How much is there? I can't tell you that.
Embezzling? These guys are way too close, bro.
I can't.
Oh, this is what a content tab, baby.
Wild out here. It's wild out here.
It's the civilians' money. It's our money that's in that account. You're holding our money to be used for, for various, uh, public services. Okay, that's what the money is there for.
The people versus state, where the fuck is the money?
Streets are cold, but it getting kinda hot in here, sir.
I will discuss this with Mayor Abdul just to make sure that everything is, uh...
Where is Mayor?
Private conversation. He's asleep. It's like.
Oh, no, 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 don't flip the script now. We need these answers right now.
He's cheating by the beach in the Cayman Islands somewhere on everybody's dime.
Flip the script.
Probably pay for that.
Who's dying? Wait, who's dying?
Abdul doesn't talk about things regardless.
Our taxes.
Mayor Abdul has four deputy mayors and all of his deputy mayors just dodge fucking questions. You can very well answer.
I'm not actually dodging any questions. I'm, I'm answering your questions.
You can very well say how much is in that state account. When I left office, there was sixteen million positive in that state account.
Wait, huh?
Would you publicly announce that? Because I've never seen you announce any of that.
He just did.
I just said it right now. Nobody asked me.
He also said during his term, if anybody bothered to ask him.
Yep.
If, uh, that's what you guys are requesting, then I'll have a talk with Mayor Abdul and make sure that every single expense we.
I don't give a fuck. Yeah, maybe the mayor should be here. The mayor doesn't do shit. He has four deputy mayors. He's wasting state money paying you guys. You guys can't do shit either.
Ursula said as much at the debates that he was a fingerhead. You guys do all the work. Why do we need Abdul here?
No, not really. Everyone serves, uh, purpose. Everyone has something to do.
Bro, let's do it for three months.
The last time I spoke with the judge, they said there was forty million plus in that account.
That, that makes sense based on how much.
That's what they told me.
I mean, look, look at, look at this logically. If we, if we take it from this, I left office with sixteen million positive in the state account. Look at asset fees. They get paid bi-weekly. Taking into account how many assets there are in the state, there's millions of dollars bi-weekly going into that account when it sits at sixteen million positive.
Mm-hmm. If Faslon started paying their stuff forward instead of only when the entire loan is paid off, then there's even more money in there.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's easily forty million dollars positive in that, in that account.
We have a rough idea how much is in there.
I'm gonna go ahead and deploy SWAT, sheriff.
Yo, let's go.
I'm gonna be transparent. Like I said, I'll have a talk.
You're not though. You're not.
I will, well, let me finish. Uh, I will make sure that you guys know about every expense that the state, uh, basically pays and how much the state account has.
How?
It's gonna be done publicly through LSPN.
Okay. What are you doing? Why are you putting out government news through a private news company?
All right, I got a question for you. Is that the, uh, budgeting day? That was tomorrow, right? So we should expect to see all these numbers tomorrow then publicly?
Yeah, but I'll have to talk to Abdul first.
What?
Someone asked, uh, why are we doing it through, uh, LSPN? I want to ask you, was it you, Penny?
Yeah.
It was, uh, B.
No, but then, but then you said, you said Weasel News as well. Okay, fine, go ahead. Now, you see, I mean, we do.
Just in case.
You're looking good.
It is extremely frustrating to find out about all these little changes that happen week in, week out through Twitter, through a news app that not many people open.
Fucking hell, bruh.
And, uh, when you have the.
Bro, this might be like a coup d'etat in this bitch, bro.
Everybody know. Why don't you use that?
What, what kind of tools?
You know, you have the email group.
State announcements.
Yeah, you know, state announcements. You can use the, you know, the global.
Oh, here comes Mole.
State announcement, government websites.
You can announce that you're having an announcement at City Hall at any point in time that you want.
Uh, yes, the mayor can do that. And we can do an announcement, but the issue is, you know, uh, if we did a state announcement, only people in the city would know about this. Now, we have discussed in the past down hall about having our announcements with, uh, the DOJ. And to be honest, we were still trying to figure out how would we, uh, go about that. If, if that, if that's, you know, if that works, we will make sure that, uh, we will announce everything through there.
Uh, it's been three months. How, how much, how much longer left in Abdul's, um, administration?
Just got in, yeah?
One month and twenty days, something like that.
Yeah, it's a fucking two months left.
Uh, you, you sit there and you say if you made a state announcement, only people in the city would know about it, but yet people in the city don't know shit about what you're doing.
Including us here.
In, including everybody here.
It's true.
And.
Yeah.
Previously.
But what, what's exactly?
I, I don't give a fuck about what you have to say. Previously, I've literally sat here and listened to Ursula claim shit that Andy did during her term. You guys acting like you're, you're creating new shit that has been in effect for two previous mayor's terms. You won't disclose shit and claiming you can't when you very well can. You're just hiding behind shit that does not exist.
When did we actually claim something that Andy did?
Okay, for example.
Department of Industry and Commerce, you said you were forming it in your platform. It already existed.
And on top of that, you.
You're finally deciding to do something with it.
And on top of that, when it comes to farmers market guidelines and legis- legislation, it was not changed during my term. It was created during Andy's and it was shit that she, she did during her term that you guys wanted to take claim for.
We only took claim for the changes that we did. The farmer markets rules and guidelines were there way before even your term, Denzel. We have.
No shit, that's what I just said, sure.
We just made changes. We never claimed that this is, you know, the rules that we made. We actually claimed that we did update the rules, but we never claimed to own these rules or to, you know, create them from scratch.
You had stated that you wanted it to be part of your legacy.
Bottom line, the communication between your office and the public is something that should have been happening this entire time, not something that should only be happening from this point forward. People have all the right in the world to learn that they're being audited from somewhere other than Twitter. On top of all the other changes you make.
A poster that could be as barely legible.
Everyone here has a phone, correct? You guys wake up every day.
If you think for the show up.
I should have fucking supported Denzel back for his term. I should have supported him. I would have gotten, I would have been a millionaire.
Might need to run for a second term, Fred.
The first term, the first term.
Yeah, maybe you do, but the, the thing is, when you guys open your phones and check the Department of Justice, you're always gonna see a mayor or deputy mayor there. Now, what kind of communication are you looking for? You can always call any of us and we will give you an answer.
But we're asking you right now for an answer.
We're aiming for.
You're telling us you won't answer.
Everybody, we, we here in the government believe that the future is mobile. Sorry, that's the wrong speech. Go ahead.
God damn it, Crane.
You can't ask questions for things that we don't know.
Crane's just laughing his ass off, bro.
Yes, what, what Penny's trying to say is how can the civilian sit here and ask questions when you're not making any of it be known? E- e- everybody has to find out through Twitter, like, or like randomly the day of. And sometimes you guys share a hide shit that comes off like.
Exactly. Like, why would you call us here to ask questions if you're not gonna answer any of them?
Um, it seems like you've thrown a lot of examples, uh, a lot of things, Denzel. Could you, uh, clarify?
Yo, man them to the moon, baby. They for three months.
Like everything from the beginning.
Regarding the things that people know about using Twitter, like what? When have we ever announced something through Twitter?
Try again, are you good?
The DIC announces their information through Twitter.
Try again, you good, bro?
It's not part of the mayor's office. It's, uh, separate entity.
And it was given authority via the mayor's office.
No, the DIC existed for a long, long time. We actually never gave them any type of power. We just helped them to, uh, you know, bring it back up to, uh...
So, so this, this kind of company that came from the shadows out of nowhere, you're just giving them the power to audit all businesses in Los Santos?
We never gave them the power. Uh, Judge.
We're helping them out.
Oh, they gave them the power through the DIC legislation.
That's wrong. That's not correct at all. Because the legislation also.
So, make sure you hit the follow button.
Guidelines include that they, for example, have to be bar certified, which Sam absolutely.
Bro, this is not looking good for this. I mean, I do not give a fuck. You gotta think about it. I'm doing, I'm doing already at the second term. He's making money.
In the first place. Not to mention, the original DIC were judges and the deputy mayor. We did not create an outside entity for this. There was no third party. And if any of you decided to pick up the phone and call either of the previous deputy mayors to get clarity on this, we would have happily told you. But that has never happened. Listen, we of all people understand how shitty people can be towards the mayor's office and that is not the point of this. But the point is that at bare minimum, even if we disagree with what you're doing, you still should be informing the public of what you are doing. So we can express complaints, so we can ask for votes to be held, so we can ask questions and have them answered.
You could just email Stanton.
That's what I did. I emailed Stanton.
Well, the person who's actually who knows more about DIC is Odessa and, uh, she's not here at the moment.
She's not here.
Wait, you said, wait a second. Wait a second. Did you just say?
You are fumbling this shit.
What do you handle in the mayor's office?
There are three meetings, guys.
Yeah, this is Salom. What is it you would say you do here?
Yo, Vic, Vic Alpha, baby, different two, two, two.
Department of Industry, Industry and Commerce.
All right, and, and that deals with financials, correct?
Uh, yes, taxes mainly.
All right, so why do we need to go and speak to a different deputy mayor to handle it when you handle financials?
I handle financials, uh, you know, with, uh, regarding budgets.
But you don't wanna talk about it in a public setting.
It sounds like you do everything except what we want you to do, which is really fucking convenient.
Yeah, it seems like you, you like just wanna dodge shit and make excuses. Like, you're, you're sitting here saying that you handle finances, but yet you don't wanna talk about it in a public setting when you have people here to the right of me, literally asking to talk about it in public.
It's something that I have to go through with the mayor. I can't do this on my own.
And where, where's the mayor?
He's asleep.
Guys, what does Abdul do? Oh, that's a loud silence.
Okay, well, that, that, you answered that question, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my God!
Actually, he helps us see.
There was a long pause there, my man.
Yeah, I know, I did take a long pause. I'm, I'm trying to find.
Bro, I'm doing, I love you, bro, but these motherfuckers is not helping you right now, bro, bro. Abdul, I love you, bro, but this is not looking good. I mean, my, my business ain't looking good either. I'm about to get sued.
Abdul handles a lot of things. He, he does not have, you know, certain tasks, like, just like deputy mayors, they, uh, they, everyone has, let's say, a lane, you know, they're, they're sticking.
Well, what does he handle?
Abdul gives his input on, uh, everything we, uh, we do. He guides us with, with everything because he's been in the city for a long, long time. And, uh...
You know. Cut the bull crap. Actually, tell us what you actually do and what he actually does.
Like I said, he guides us with everything. If I need to do everything, uh, anything, I will talk to Abdul.
Bro, this is, this is typical politing dodge question. We got taught the same question in the military, how to dodge, like, comments for, for interviews. We dodged the fuck out them questions, bro.
You know, when the election was happening for your guys' second term, I sat in this very, this very building and watched Abdul not even speak for himself on why he should be reelected. And I think that speaks volumes of what he does. He does absolutely nothing. His deputy mayors do everything and the two deputy mayors here today are just dodging questions left, right and center.
I'm not dodging questions. I'm answering questions. You said you wanna transparency. Like I said, I'll give you, I'll give you transparency once I get approval from Abdul. I'm not dodging any questions. I'm answering your questions.
Are we allowed to, to propose legislation?
Uh, Mr. Crane, maybe you can answer that.
Uh, what's your, your comment here?
Well, I'm wondering, eh, I mean, there's a lot of talk about transparency. Wouldn't it be better just to have a law that requires the, the government to be transparent with budgets and how they spend the money?
There is. It's impeachable not to be transparent with the public from the mayor's office.
Well, then why, why, why are we standing here listening to this man tell us we can't, we can't know this stuff?
I don't think it goes into specifically, but. Yeah, it does say that. In the mayor's expectations of office. As well as the deputy mayors, I believe.
Wait till they find out about this hotel money. Oh, bro, God forbid they find out about this hotel money.
Rise up. Rise up, my children.
I can't rise up. I'm in a wheelchair that I don't have.
Legitimate reason.
Don't, don't play the.
Get her a fucking booster seat.
We'll rise you up.
Somebody get her up.
Why didn't you sit in one of the chairs?
I have a stroller.
Somebody get her an AK.
This is a good, this is a good banter now.
Listen, I don't blame you for.
My thought is that if there is a legal requirement to be transparent, there is no need for you to go to the mayor to ask if you can be allowed to be transparent. You are required by law to be transparent.
And, uh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, excuse my ignorance, guys. I, uh, I have not memorized the whole, uh, mayor and deputy mayor, uh, legislation. Could, could anyone read it out for me?
What?
Tommy speedrunning the lines.
You haven't read your stipulations of office?
I did read it, but I didn't memorize.
She makes that ass, bro.
Yes, I did.
Weird. This is, this is a bloodbath, chef.
I think it's time for an impeachment, guys.
Okay, who's drawing up the papers?
Please, go ahead. Leave it to me. I want to know where I'm, where the mayor office is required by law to have transparency.
Ah!
Do you know? Work with honesty and integrity.
Okay, does it say transparency?
Could that not be considered as transparent?
It would be under the Articles of Impeachment was where you're gonna find the transparency, uh, clause, guideline, whatever.
Oh, man, Tommy, hey, Tommy's gonna wake up. Mister Tommy, we have a warrant for your arrest.
And the Articles of Impeachment, I know, are handed to every mayor's office.
Mister Tommy, we have a, a warrant for your arrest. Uh, we have, we have, uh, beliefs that you were embezzling money.
Damn, I've never seen criminals and police and, uh, job creators so bound together so tightly for a hatred of one organization. This is actually touching.
Mayor's office.
To be fair, to be fair, it's more like.
Bro, this is so bad, bro. This is actually so bad.
Just the executive branch, dog. Happens.
I don't blame you for wanting to talk to your boss about.
Yeah, embezzlement's only fifteen months.
No, I don't need to check my, with my boss. I just need to know where does it say that, you know, we have to be transparent.
Man, I'm trying to help you here, man.
You said multiple times.
Yeah, well. Oh, of course, that's something that I have to respect, but like I said.
We don't even do that in the PD.
True!
If the mayor's office is required by law, and I don't know, I don't know the law, so if somebody's looking that up, but if they're required by law, that means the mayor's office.
Alright, so what's your?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Alright, boys, I'm gonna go ahead and put out the warrant right now, okay? Gonna go ahead and put out the warrant.
That's just one or two questions I can't answer.
Go ahead, put the, uh, gonna go ahead and put the warrant out right now.
It's something that we have to commit and then even the next mayor has to commit to.
Been an honor. This has been an honor.
No. So, I guess we're done with, with what comes to budgets. Like I said, we, we're gonna be transparent, but we're gonna have to find a way to do it. Like I said, we've been doing it through LSPN and Weasel, but you guys.
Literally tell us. Literally tell us. You can literally just open your mouth and just speak it and.
You could also just post it wherever, you know? You post it on the apps, go to all kinds of government websites, just fucking make sure it be known.
Yeah, I'll make sure that it's, it's known, uh, once I talked to Abdul about this. Uh, after all, I am the deputy mayor, I'm not the mayor. This type of decision should be taken by the mayor.
Fuck that. When you're deputized, you have his word.
Exactly.
Now, I got a question. Do you have to ask Abdul, um, before you wipe your ass too?
Please be respectful, for fuck's sakes.
Don't curse in the courtroom.
Well, I would, I would just say that if there is no legislation requiring the government to be transparent, there should be.
Yo, ask that to think for Twitch Prime, baby.
You have a judge.
Well, I asked my question. I'm good.
For that legislation. So I, I have a question to the deputies over there. Did you guys find the Articles of Impeachment?
Who are you asking?
What, you're just talking to me? Why are you asking me? I never said I was going to.
I mean, I don't, I, I mean, that's not really. Alright.
That's not really something.
We weren't even, we weren't even talking to you about that. Don't try and, yeah, don't try and put that aside.
Somebody's got the Articles of Impeachment.
Alright, I have it here.
Don't fucking read rec here, okay?
Alright, dude, I mean, read it off, dog. I mean.
Alright, the Articles of Impeachment, uh, are, uh, the guidelines were holding the, uh, title of Los Santos mayor, which I assume would also implied, applied to deputy mayor, uh, are to conduct themselves in a.
Just applied to the mayor because the deputy mayors would get fired by the mayor.
Okay.
Well, let him finish. Let him read.
Well, I'm a she, but sure.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Oh, my God. Oh my god. Twenty twenty-one. Jesus.
Are to conduct themselves in a professional manner even when all duty, with honesty and integrity.
I'm over here, bro. I'm not gonna get caught up in that, bro. Everybody... Nah, sirree bob. No sir. No sirree bob.
Encourage others to express their views and keep an open mind, set a good examples for others. And then the Articles of Impeachment themselves say, uh, dereliction of duties which are failure to perform duties from lack of activity in the office or outright refusing to perform duties of what is expected. Uh, gross negligence, person performing, person consciously disregards the needs of reasonable care thus leading to foreseeable, foreseeable grave injury or harm to other persons. Uh, gross incompetence, continuous behavior that leads to misconduct, actions or thoughts that lead to serious consequences or injury. Uh, general corruption to be found in the act of being continuously dishonest, dishonest or fraudulent. I can't talk today, Jesus. Uh, person is found to be using their position in order to secure illegal benefits for themselves or like persons or criminal conviction to be found after going through the due process of being convicted in a court of law to include being convicted by a court of the state of San Andreas or pleading ultimate guilt to a peace officer. And that's what it lists for. Or, hang on, I am reading the wrong thing. My MDW seems to reset itself.
Yes.
Leave it to my MDW, it's set itself.
Yeah, I asked, uh, I asked the question and it kind of triggered a lot of shit.
Cliff notes, cliff notes.
Yeah, this has not been a good day for the mayor's office.
The one you're looking for is expectations of mayor is, uh, being fair and consistent in their communication. And application of policies.
Yeah, I've been starving. I have an IFAC.
No, that was the right one, yeah. That was the Articles of Impeachment, yeah. But that was the entire thing.
There is nothing about impeachment that says transparency. We guys, we've, we've been trying to be transparent, but this type of decision I can't, I can't take by my own.
Bro, this whole, MDMA's arc has been dodging the nines.
No, you're fine.
I'm not being dishonest. I'm being honest. I can't take that decision on my own. I have to let Abdul know.
Blow something with the public, but you're not dishonest.
Did, did I give you a false number? Did I say the state is not doing, you know, well, did I, did I say something that is dishonest?
You didn't give us a number at all.
Yeah, you didn't give us the fucking number at all, man.
Like I said, I'm being honest with you guys. I can't... Like I said, I'm being honest. I can't give a number. I can't say anything without Abdul's approval. He is the mayor, I am his deputy.
Why? You can literally walk over to the ATM and pop it open.
What, wait, are you saying you can't tell us how much is in the, in, in the budget, the state account? Because, okay. I mean, I'm gonna be real with you. I mean, back home in America, we know what the, the debt is and everything. It's just public knowledge. Like, why would we not be able to know if we're in deficit or if we're in the positive? I, I don't...
Are you asking if the state is in positive or negative?
No, we want to know how much money is in the goddamn fucking account.
I know. You want a specific number that I can't make that decision by my own. You have to understand that.
Were you previously instructed not to give a number?
How about we just play warm and cold, okay? We just say a number. You say if we're warm.
You know what? Well, I'm about it. About it. Let's do that.
Thirty million dollars.
I can't do that.
Can you just say?
Thirty, thirty million.
Deputy mayor, I can't pay it right there.
Bro, we about to square this one, bro. You know what I'm saying?
Listen, listen, you, listen. You need to do some damage control with the public eye. This is hurting the mayor. The people want to know, we need, you need to tell the people. This is damage control right here. I'm sure the mayor would be fine with it because look at this. The, these motherfuckers, if we weren't here, somebody would probably be dead. And I think we might need more officers here when it comes time to leave. I'm gonna be honest. You guys need to be transparent and, and say this shit. This is damage control for you guys because right now, this mayor's office is not looking like a strong ship to be aboard.
And I'm gonna be all the way real with you. Somehow managed to get criminals and officers to band on the same side, dog. Like, I, I don't know how that happened. But it just did.
I, I actually expect that. This is part of my job. You guys are here to express your concerns and I'm here to take it. I completely understand that. But like I said, guys, I can't do that without, uh, telling the mayor.
Yeah, I don't understand. I need to make a call, bro. That's what you're gonna do.
How much money is in the account and why can't we present numbers?
Deputy mayor, de- deputy mayor, re- reason. De- deputy mayor, reason with me real quick. Look, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take my helmet off real quick, okay? Listen. If, if you just tell us the number, right? Right? If you just tell us the number, we can't steal the money, you know? Like, it would just, it's just not, we can't do nothing with the money.
I mean, the vault gets robbed daily anyway. That's besides the point.
Would have a problem with you telling the public how much is in the state fund?
I have no idea. I'll have to talk to him about that.
Yeah, stop his money, sorry, buddy.
So I'm confused why you're concerned about Abdul's direction.
Bro, I don't want to be mayor after this, bro. I don't want to be mayor, bro. Cause me up there, chat, I would be petty. I'd be like, oh, for real? Y'all wanna, y'all wanna bitch at me? I'm taking all the money. I'm leaving. I'm just gonna take the money and leave. I can't be mayor. I can't. I cannot be mayor, bro.
Does he hit you?
I can't be mayor. I can't be mayor. I'm telling you, I can't.
Any more questions?
Was that a blink?
Yeah, I just... That's it, man.
Hey, Salim, don't worry. I'm not against you.
Yeah, so I got a question. Aren't, uh, isn't there checks and balances between judges and mayor's office? Shouldn't they be able to tell us as well?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
This is more of a question for Crane, I guess, because with all due respect, I've only been here for five minutes and I trust him more than you at this point. Uh, isn't there a checks and balances between judges and the mayor's office at this point? So shouldn't you guys be able to tell us this as well? Like, don't you guys have like the same level of power in some degree to the mayor's office?
I think that's, uh, separation of, separation of powers. Separation of powers, though.
Well, yeah, but like, don't they have the authority to do that? We have a compressed government here. And while technically I do have the mechanical ability.
Bro, as yo, yo, Mr. Quincy, what are you doing to help with, um, financial instability in, in, in Los Santos?
It is, if we did something like that, I'll put it this way.
How much I need? Two million. Hey, give him two million.
For every single thing ever.
That's exactly. The brass kid, baby. Hey, thanks for tip fraud. I'm telling you, there's gonna be no money in the account.
Okay, so, Dr. Crane.
Okay, bravo, bravo. A little less.
So, I guess my, my next thing is like, sorry, my next thing is like, to kind of bounce off what Carter said, back in America, we had the FDCPA who checks this kind of shit. So, why?
The YMCA?
FDCPA, it's the fucking...
Don't worry about it. Just keep going. Let's keep going.
It, it stands for the Fair Debt, uh, Fucking Collection Practices Act. It basically protects us from not knowing what's going into, like, what our money's going into when they find us and shit.
Yeah.
So, it's like, I'm wondering...
You should just continue. Uh, that's a lot of explaining.
Yeah, so my question is, like, I feel like that kind of still furthers the point that we deserve the right to know. One, where the state's money is considering a lot of people in here work for the state. And two, a lot of people in here are paying fines and taxes and everything in between to the state and still have no idea what's happening with that money. How do we know that somebody who...
Mr. Laser, we do put American practices in the game.
Something's not happening within the mayor's office where our money is literally getting taken from our taxes that we're getting taken out of our paychecks and shit and that it's not going to something personal to the mayor's office instead of going to something that we actually need.
It doesn't even need to be nefarious. It can be some, simply, the money is sitting there and not be properly allocated.
Yeah.
We need to know what's being done with the money.
And so...
And I think if, if there is no law that, that, that requires that, I think there should be and perhaps that's the next step.
Very true.
And so when we present you facts and figures and then you fire off, you don't need that money when it's sitting in your face saying that we actually need that money and you're not gonna allocate it to us even though we show proof. I, I don't understand the logic or the mindset behind that. So, that brings us to this, how much money is actually in, in, in the account? Because if there's not enough, say, look, we don't have enough. If there is, then there's a problem.
Exactly. Look, if the state is hurting so much that a hundred thousand dollars a week is too much to bear, then I feel like we have bigger issues at hand.
I paid twenty-four dollars for fucking sandwiches, damn it. I want to know where my money is going.
Yeah!
We want to know where the money's going!
Sandwiches.
Please.
I mean, last I heard like a month and a half ago, Abdul said we had like fifty, sixty million in the budget.
What the? Excuse me? What?
Yeah.
And you can't give us a hundred and fifty grand?
Show us the money!
So Abdul did tell.
Uh, yeah, Abdul.
Mother PD!
It seemed like, it seemed like Abdul has...
What the fuck? It seemed like a dragon sitting on your heart of gold.
If Abdul said it publicly in the past, then what's the problem with telling us right now, man?
Where's our money?
Of course, the mayor's not here.
Where's the money?
I want a gold-plated police vest. I want a gold-plated police vest.
What is the problem with you telling us?
Number one is I don't have access to the state's, uh, money, only the mayor does, so I can't give you an accurate number. Number two is I have to go to Abdul's.
Wait!
Wait, I have a question. I have a question.
Go for it.
Where's the mayor?
We've been asking that question.
Is that a joke?
No, it's not a joke.
Where's the mayor? Where's the DIC?
Dude knows what the actual role of a deputy mayor is. Is there an actual, like, decision maker? Um, not, Mr. Crane, you're not some individual.
We've been over.
Crane loves you. You're perfect.
Separation of powers, Andrew. Crane has nothing to do with the executive branch. He's got a PhD in thuganomics and hood tactics, so I, I respect it.
Damn right.
I respect it.
Overqualified.
So are we just like bitching and yelling at people that can't do shit?
Yeah.
Yep.
No, they can.
Oh, they can. Okay, so this is the thing. This is where we're at, Andrew. We just want to know how much money is in the goddamn budget and he won't answer.
He says he has to speak to the mayor first.
I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna lie. Listen, you want to be, you, you, you want to do this, you want to do this in a private setting, my man.
We've been chiming in, don't worry.
And if, the earlier you tell us the number, the more people is gonna keep coming in here. So just tell us now before more people come in here so it can be more privatized.
Sam, this is twice the audience size from an hour ago.
You gotta damage control this. Just give us the number. That's all we want to know.
I tweeted that there was a public execution right now and that'd be...
Oh my god.
The fuck?
Not literally, calm down.
I mean, there kind of is one going on here.
Salim, don't you just like hate how this makes you feel? Like, this could just be over if you just like told us the number.
Yeah.
Plus you get a hundred respects, bruh.
Yeah.
It's better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Uh, ex, ex-mayor has, uh...
Always be my man.
Had your hand up?
Oh, yeah. So if you don't, okay, so in your expectations, it basically says that you're supposed to be transparent with the public and you have the due diligence to help us with whatever we're requesting as citizens. Not whatever we're requesting, but, you know, to uphold the office and make sure you're giving us the help we need and vice versa. Um, then there's, you know, an article impeachment that says if you're not following your expectations, you can be impeached. So that's how that happens. But if you actually needed to literally say that transparency and certain things that you can or cannot do are required, as long as they're not issues of actual security, then, uh, I mean, I propose that we make legislation for that. Can you start working on that with the judges?
That is actually a state account with a lot of money in it.
And we can decide on that.
Yes, absolutely.
Because if you actually need it spelled out that clearly, I'm sure we'd be happy to vote that in.
You have Judge Crane on my left. The, uh, the DOJ handles the legislation.
Well, the mayor's office also, you know, talks to them about that, writes it up and they write up the actual formal edit. At least that's how it's supposed to work.
But I think it's, uh, two-way from the mayor's office and the DOJ. Anyone can propose legislation.
I think everybody knows, but you know what I'm saying? We have to do it within, we have to do it within our PD time. Everybody knows how much money is in the state.
Sure, but I motion that the mayor's office has a direct hand in creating this so you can never claim again that you don't know what the fuck we're talking about.
Well, I know exactly what you're talking about. Uh, that's why I asked you to find me where it says we need to be transparent in the legislation.
Yeah, and you've also said here and said you don't even remember your own expectations of office.
Question.
I said I did not memorize it. Go for it, Andrews.
Uh, what is your position? Deputy mayor.
Okay, so he handles, he handles the finances.
Angel, is this the guy that you're like fighting with over getting like...
This is the guy, this is the guy that I presented a spreadsheet showing I needed a hundred thousand a week minimum and he said he'd give me fifty thousand to start.
Fucking bash him. Why didn't bash him?
How do you fucking do that? What the fuck is that? He did. He said, I would give you fifty thousand as a starting budget and we'll see how it goes in a week. That's what you said.
Fifty thousand dollars, sir, come on.
These type of discussions should be having private because I never said that.
Why?
No, 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 this is not a private matter, though.
You did. You did say that.
USA, they're coming after you.
Listen, sir, with all due respect, I, I...
I was there with the other ones too. Underwood was there as well.
Many conversations with Miss Angel over here and she's literally banging her head against the wall trying to get this figured out so we can just fund this, this interceptor unit and have the cars running properly. They're very, very fucking expensive.
I understand that and I'm, I'm willing to have a discussion. The fact that I'm willing to have a discussion about this because budget should be sent out tomorrow. I'm willing to have a private discussion about this inside the mayor's office whenever the town hall meeting is, is over.
But I think she tried that and this is where we're at.
This is where we stepped in and said this is for money.
And there's fifty, sixty million in the budget.
Honestly, there should be a general strike.
Fifty, sixty million in the budget.
As a criminal, I'm not gonna do any crime until this is fixed.
We have a woman that can't get a wheelchair and there's fifty, sixty billion in the budget.
What exactly do you guys spend the money on?
That's what we're trying to...
Bash, bash him round the finances. So you can't tell...
I'm sorry, you can't, you can't tell the people what you spend their money on?
Yes, because from my expectations and looking at the legislation, I'm supposed to assist Abdul and not act on his, his behalf.
Alright, um, what's your, what's your name, by the way?
Salim.
So you know your duties and functions, right?
Yes.
So, appointed deputy mayor serve at the pleasure of the mayor and may function as chief operating officer. You don't need to ask him, you can tell us.
Are you the second in command? Like, if, if the mayor dies, it's like a, a system or, uh, yeah, the, the...
Are you a vice principal?
All the mayor isn't available.
Listen, say, as, listen, deputy mayor, think of it as this. Think, think of it as this, deputy mayor. You, you, you're not gonna get fired. The worst that's gonna happen, you're gonna get chewed out, okay? We all been chewed out, okay? Just, just tell us. Just tell us the number.
People coming to ask.
Yeah, well, that is, I mean, this, this is the point of town hall meetings. You guys should express your complaints and I'm here to listen. If you guys want to try to pitch forks and torches, I completely understand. Now, I will, I will answer.
That's not where we're, that's not where we're trying to get. But you're not, but you're not really answering. They're, they're asking you questions and you're like, I can't tell you that. I can't tell you that. Next question.
Yes, I...
He can't tell you why he can't tell you.
Uh, no, I hope that doesn't tap.
Alright, so which one of the deputies here was chosen by Abdul?
You'd rather leave this courtroom and get shot than answer this question?
Uh, it's something we scheduled. Yeah, it's, it's also...
Alright, so I asked, uh, because you got, uh, deputized and are here in Abdul's place, you may function as...
This is actually a low, bro.
In his place.
I'm, I'ma stay here for protection.
At this point of time, yes.
See, see, see.
I feel like you can do these things, you're just choosing not to.
Yeah, that, that, that's my biggest thing is you, you're, you're sitting here saying you can't do it, but you very well can.
And, and furthermore, furthermore, the fact that you're so hesitant to tell us the number is pretty damning in and of itself. The fact that you won't tell us if it's high or low or anything. You won't give us a single fucking hint. Why? Why? What's so precious about it?
Hot or cold. It's all we need to do. Hot or cold.
Like, do you just think we're dumb? Like, I mean, we voted for this mayor for a reason and we're asking where is our tax going? So why is it hard for you to just let the public know, hey, this is where your hard earned money is going? We're paying our taxes on time. We just want to know how much is there. And why should we subject ourselves to audits as businesses if the entire government can't be honest with what they're doing with their money?
Yeah, you won't even let us... Every month and now you're, you're saying you don't trust me to even do that.
And that, that the person that since you're claiming they handle finances doesn't even have access to the state account and can't answer the question honestly, says he can't do it when you very well can, you just don't want to.
The fucking, the fucking perception here is that you're not telling us because you all fucked up and fumbled the bag or something. Cause if it was up good, I'd imagine you'd just be like, yeah, fuck yeah, man, we got hella money in there. So...
Yeah, the fact that you can't just say it's okay.
How fucking broke are we? How bad is it?
How, what do you do if you're the deputy of mayor financing? Look, it's a lot more work if they have a budget with actual money in it because we know how things people are gonna be asking for their fucking handouts.
I want my handout, you son of a bitch!
Well, actually, you know what?
Let's think, let's think about this logically, guys. Alright, let's think about this logically. The fact that all these audits are popping up, maybe there is no fucking money.
Maybe they're selling drugs.
There may be no fucking money right now.
So now where is the money going?
Then maybe we should use the SPO for the state funds.
Can we just get a, a well check on the hood homie Crane real quick? You okay over there?
Crane, you okay?
Crane and Ursula are just vibing. They fucking so glad.
Look, Ursula was in the hot seat for like twenty-five, thirty minutes and Saleem showed up.
Yeah, so, Saleem, you, you fucked up by waking up and walking to this courtroom. I'm not gonna lie to you. I would've stayed asleep. I would've stayed in the fuck, Saleem. I would've stayed in the fuck asleep.
Salem, listen. You gotta listen.
I would've stayed though. Fuck asleep, bro.
This isn't anything major. We need to know how much.
Oh, my God.
They better not have been my fucking car.
Right, so I'm gonna go check.
I think they're naming their budgets now for the car repair. It's gonna still be white, man.
Alright.
The crowd has tripled now.
I'll be back.
Yep.
People everywhere.
Hopefully not. Not me.
I don't know, the police are leaving.
This is bad for this dude. I feel bad. He is getting chewed the fuck out. They're like, they're like, where's, where's my body? This is like a town hall meeting. This is like a TV show right now, bro. I'm dying.
So if you're the, uh, if you're the deputy mayor of finances, what do you do?
Alright, just cut up the onions really small and cut up tomatoes really small and leave them.
Oh, this is an honest question. I just want to know. Okay, I can hear you.
I work with other departments has to work out on a budget, as I have previously worked with, uh, Sheriff, uh, Kyle over there.
He has.
Okay, so you work with other departments, you figure out a budget, and then you, you just go to Abdul and say, hey, this is what they want, and then he looks it over and approves it?
Yes, and he also thinks so.
Okay, so.
So you're an ignorant boy.
We can't even talk to you.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. So what I'm understanding is you are literally, and this is with all due respect, you're just a messenger. So Abdul doesn't have to have all these meetings, is what I'm hearing.
Uh, messenger is one way to, to actually think a lot.
Yeah, you agree with that statement?
I'm from mine. I'm not, I don't really mind.
Okay, that's not what I, I did not want to call him that, but.
I did it for you, don't worry.
Uh, can you, can you ask, can you answer this question?
Go for it.
Uh, how, how does the, the city make money here? Like, where, where are the various areas that, uh, city gets paid?
Uh, well, uh, when it comes, you know, taxes is mainly the, the biggest income to the state. Asset taxes, vehicle purchase taxes, and, you know, goods and services.
Where else is, uh, where, where else do the city make money from?
Law enforcement, you know, billing criminals, I guess.
Think, think about, think about America.
What is a huge percentage of, what is the percentage of? What is the percentage of, uh, the city's income from law enforcement?
Uh, I don't know. I have no idea.
You don't know?
So you're the financial, like, you're the deputy mayor who does with finances, and you cannot tell us what percentage we make up of the city's income? What the fuck?
Uh, I mean, if you wanted, you know, on.
Nah, bro, them gas pumps, I think the gas pump, the asset fees is a bigger portion, but the gas pump's like close second. Gas pumps, close second. Wait, no, cops, then gas pumps.
Are you saying you don't know or you don't have the figures in front of you, SA? It's your fucking job to be doing this shit.
So, okay, okay, you say that it's asset tax. I'm sure that everyone in here alone pays one million plus in asset tax alone. So where is that money going?
One million plus? No, that's, doesn't make any sense.
You think that, everyone combined in here pays a million plus, or doesn't pay a million plus?
You know, you know, let's do some, wait, wait, hold on. Let's do some math. Just the tuna shop alone probably generates like two million in asset fees from all those cars that they've sold every two weeks. Just that one business.
Uh, what about the gas pumps?
Well over a million dollars in a rest of week, and that's lowballing it.
What's the gas pumps money going to?
Lowballing it, and it's been hut, it's been hut season, bruh.
Yeah, man.
It has been hut season. The last few days, we've done one point five million dollars.
Guys, alright, everybody, hold on.
I'm eighty-seven K in part of that, man.
Abner, hold on. Alright, we're at the stage where this meeting's been going now for a little over about an hour and a half. I understand y'all may still have outstanding.
This is content. My viewers are up, Crane, what are you doing?
Concerns, and you'd like to continue speaking, mayor's office or anyone else. If you'd like to do that, and if they'd like to ma- remain present, fine. Uh, I am going to start working on some other paperwork, so I'm gonna depart. Uh, if y'all want to remain, y'all want to ask me questions, let me know. Um, but I'm gonna close the meeting.
And make sure you hit the follow button, boys. Especially all you new motherfuckers. I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you guys tuning in. My name is Dean Quincy.
No, you can't.
I'm a, I'm a.
Hold on.
Start moving, we gotta guard this guy.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, he's gonna get shot.
Up the move.
Up the bit?
Salem, that wasn't a good move for the public trust.
That was real fun, Dan.
You piece of.
Oh!